You'll need to, you at the table, at the council, will need to determine probably what sort of budget you do have. Do you want something that's just mass stabilization? Do you want something that's more historic in nature? That's something that, as I said, the political will has to be determined here at the table. And then you step forward with plans and specifications. And those have to be approved by the ANRC, I believe, or they're still regulating this. So they have to be approved by the ANRC before you start construction. So that gives some time. You know, the first step is the plan. Well, the first step is right now. We're finding out about it. We're talking about it. Where do we want to go from here? The second step is the plan with the specifications for the materials. And the third step would be selecting a contractor and going out and constructing the dam.
And in the meanwhile, setting a budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You've come through once again.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is number seven. The dog control update. We had a very good workshop. We had some folks attend it from the public, their input. Mr. Parnell did come up with a very good. I think it's going to be a work in progress, and I think we should just probably have another couple of workshops on it by the public, just like we did. I have some figures here I'd like to read to y'all. I don't know that I put these out, but you may have these. These are the figures from the animal control officer about the dogs that have been picked up since December 2010. December 6, January 1, February was 7, March was 4, April, there were eight of them with three returned back to the owners with citations for dogs at large or vicious dogs. And May, from the 1st until now, two have been picked up. That doesn't count the one I picked up. And some of these do not reflect dogs that have just been picked up close to a house and just given back to the owner saying, "Can find your animal, restrain your animal, do whatever, don't let them out and run again." Most of these reflect dogs that are out running at large. So that's where we're at right now. Comments? Discussion? Are we good with another workshop? Okay. Is that a consensus? Is... Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm very pleased with, also, with what happened at the workshop. And Mr. Parnell's contribution was excellent. And I think we're ready to go. We identified three major problems, three major areas we needed to really put energy into. So I think that's, we're ready to keep going.
Okay. Do y'all want to vote on having another workshop or just consensus amongst the members to have one? All in favor? Yeah. Okay, good. All right. Then we'll schedule another one, and we'll let it be known to the public, just like we did this time. Okay? All right. Number eight, land bank ordinance. Mr. Weaver has drawn up an ordinance that you should have a draft of. Motion to discuss.
移到
Made. Motion to discuss is seconded. Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead. Mr. Weaver, you want to champion the cause here?
What you have before you is, based on the documentation that Parks had presented through Mr. Levine, he has seen this ordinance this afternoon and made some changes to it. And I went back through it after he did and stabilized a couple of words that we had decided needed addressing. And what you have before you, I think, meets with what he has in mind at this time and would be a, to set up a committee with established membership, and that they would then make the recommendations. Of course, any sales would actually have to eventually be approved by council, and any purchases would also be approved by council through either resolutions or ordinances in the future. And it would hold the money in a line item. I don't know if our finance director's seen this document, because I didn't send it to her. And it would direct her to create a line item. And so you may want to get comments on whether she thinks it's workable from the budgetary constraints and requirements of her office. But it basically follows exactly what was brought to you a couple of weeks ago that the parks passed around as their suggestions. I believe.
I would entertain a motion to table this or postpone this till the next meeting so you have time to study it.
So moved.
Motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Number nine's been removed by Ms. Alexander. Number 10, discussion of personal use of public vehicles. Dr. Kirkpatrick, and Ms. Balance. Doc?
I'd like to talk to you about this. You said you're going to talk to the head of department heads and get back to us on this.
Yeah. From the limited information I got, I'm assuming this was police officers, because it was never really discussed.
All.
All?
Oh, yes.
Okay. It's within the department's, department head's discretion as to give use of that vehicle for company time. Now, in the police department, it's going to be two individuals. It's going to be Thomas Acord, who is the assistant chief, and the detective, he takes his home due to the fact all his equipment's in the car, or Chief Hyatt, who is on call 24/7. I'm not aware of any others that are doing it, but that's the two that I'm assuming was asked about. Since I wasn't given any other information, other than it was police officers.
Yes, I've seen some down at Parkview Bottom. I think there's an officer taking his car home down there.
An officer?
It's a police car.
It's not, it's not a unit from ESPD. It might be a sheriff's car.
I don't think so. I may be wrong, though.
Okay. Well, I've talked to Chief Hyatt, and he said they won't take them out of town as they're chasing somebody or going to pick somebody up. He said it's, business is normal. Now, if you can confirm that, then we'll deal with that issue.
Okay, thank you.
I'd almost bet if it's down there constantly, it's somebody that lives down there. And that's all I have on that one. Ms. Balance?
Um, I've had, I've seen a few other departmental vehicles being used for what appears to be personal business. Now, I don't have any, well, I do have some confirmation of that, but I won't go into it now. Perhaps I could speak with you privately about this.
Door's always open. I wish we'd addressed this a long time ago. It's something that doesn't even need to be on the agenda.
Well, one thing that our city code does say, and since we were speaking about the police department while, we'll speak there for a moment. Chapter 2.48.01, which it actually, states, "Established. There is established the Police Department of the City, which shall consist of the Chief of Police and such police officers as the council shall prescribe by resolution or ordinance." Incidentally, I haven't been able to find anywhere that the city council has prescribed by resolution or ordinance how many police officers we should have. So maybe that's something we'll add to the agenda and talk about at a later time. It also says, "Each member of the Police Department shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council pursuant to the provisions of this article." Incidentally, I've provided that information also, and I haven't been able to find any confirmation by the council of any of our police department members. So that's beside the point for now. It also says, "They shall receive such compensation as shall be determined by ordinance or resolution." Incidentally, I couldn't find that either.
I think it's called pay.
Pardon me?
It's pay. Salary.
Pay?
Pay.
They shall receive such compensation as shall be determined by ordinance or resolution. I'm saying I can't find any ordinances or resolutions that say how much our police officers should get paid, even though that's what this says.
It's called budget.
Pardon me?
Budget.
"And such compensation shall be in lieu of all special fees, rewards, or remuneration arising from such police service." I would think of, you know, using public vehicles for personal...
Point of order.
Yeah, I'm confused, too. What's it have to do with the use of the vehicles?
It doesn't say here anywhere that they should have vehicles to just use as they choose. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Berry?
That's it.
Okay. Any further? I think all those issues can be addressed through Mr. Weaver. I believe when the ordinance is established, it tells how many officers get paid, how much they get paid, who gets what, pay raises, so on and so forth. So. Anything else? All right.
Take about a five minute.
Second.
Motion to take a five-minute recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in session. We finished number 10 on under unfinished business. Number 11 will be next, yellow trash bags. Ms. Balance and Mr. Parnell, discussion? Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Made and seconded. All in. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Interestingly enough, the number one item that citizens want to talk to me about is yellow trash bags. Most of them, of course, don't want to use them. I try to explain to them why I've been told they need to use them. And so apparently, the citizens must purchase yellow bags and use them, but businesses don't. I've been told that the use of yellow trash bags came about many years ago in an effort to help subsidize our recycling efforts. That could or could not be correct, but that's how I understand it.
That's my understanding of it. About 15 grand worth.
Okay. Apparently, we don't use that particular recycling facility anymore. Is that correct?
There's only one in the county. There's two sites.
So it's not, it's not the city anymore. It used to be the city, but it's not anymore.
Carroll County Solid Waste.
Is that correct? Okay. So what people have brought forth to me is that yellow bags encourage the citizens to recycle. They wonder if it encourages the citizens to recycle, why wouldn't it also not benefit, encourage the businesses to recycle? So I thought about that for a while and thought, well, maybe it would be good if everybody used, instead of just trying to wipe out the yellow bags, maybe it'd be good if everybody used the yellow bags. And if everybody had to use the yellow bags and buy them, that would raise our income enough that possibly we could disperse yellow bags to the senior citizens, possibly at a rate of one bag per week per senior citizen or per senior citizen household, to lessen the load on the senior citizens. So I'm hoping we can talk about some way to either do away with the yellow bags or have everybody use the yellow bags and allow the senior citizens to have perhaps one bag a week to help subsidize them, since they are on fixed incomes, and they can certainly use our help. And we certainly don't do a lot for senior citizens around here. So that's what I'm bringing up, and I'm hoping we'll be able to talk about and maybe come to some kind of a consensus.
Ms. DeVito?
Businesses are already mandated to recycle cardboard. I think a better approach would be to mandate the recycling of bottles. I know at my restaurant, we do metal, cooking oil, bottles, plastic, cardboard, just anything that can be recycled, we do. Some businesses generate more solid waste. We pay for it in our collection fees. We also pay an accelerated rate for water and sewer, which a number of years ago, the city decided to have the businesses pay a proportionally larger share than the residents.
That's true.
Rather than adding to the cost of doing business at this point in time, which is a very difficult time for a lot of businesses, I would be more in favor, since we already mandate businesses to collect cardboard, that in the spirit of recycling, we would extend that to collecting bottles and plastic and other recyclables that can be picked up. So, you know, I don't want to encumber businesses any more than they already do right now. They provide jobs for people in the city. We already pay, you know, a goodly amount of taxes. We generate revenue for the city. So I think what's fair and equitable would be to encourage more recycling than to start... I mean, we're already paying for the garbage that we produce, so, you know, if you want to encourage more recycling, I would rather approach it from the attitude of, like we do with cardboard already, mandate glass and plastic.
Anyone else? Ms. Balance?
Well, as far as the water fees, it's interesting that you brought that up, because the more water you use, the less you pay for it. So the average citizen is actually paying more for the water that they use than businesses are paying for the water that they use. So that's really not a very good argument, in my opinion. Trash is disposed of by the tonnage, if I understand correctly. So, so on our, on our water bills, we have, oh, I wish I could find this piece of paper, but I bet I can't. On our water bills, the citizens pay a certain rate, $1,250 perhaps, for sanitation? So that means everybody who has, who owns a home, or everybody who pays a water bill, pays $1,250 base rate. I believe, I believe that's correct. I could be incorrect. $1,250 base rate?
We'd have to get, go out and look at it.
Okay. So, and take, for instance, an elderly, single person who generates, well, let's say just for the sake of argument, a bag a week of garbage. And most senior citizens I know don't even generate that much. Okay. So here we have a family of one who pays the $1,250 base rate for their trash. They pay 75 cents a bag for the larger bags. So if they have four of those in a month's time, that'd be about three, three extra dollars a month. So they're paying $1,550. So a family of several who generates a lot more trash than that is paying slightly higher, and yet the base rate is the same for each person. I keep thinking we can come up with a way to do away with the base rate and make everybody use bags, or, or make, keep, keep the base rate and make nobody use bags, which would help our senior citizens. I keep thinking we can come up with a better way. And that's why I brought this up, because a lot of people talk to me about this, and it's important to them, and that's why they talk to me about it. And that's why I brought it forward to this table, hoping that we could come up with a better solution.
Mr. Berry?
I think a lot of times, people don't understand that the money that's being generated, how much money is being generated, and that it's going to supplement the solid waste for the recycling, $15,000. If we do without the yellow bags, we're going to have to come up with $15,000 somehow, which we're already in a tight budget. As James pointed out, commercial, my office is owned commercial, and I'm paying around $40, $50 a month for trash. And I only put out three bags a week. So I'm still paying a commercial rate. If we mandated all commercial businesses to go with yellow bags and I bought those, I have a feeling, because that's supplemented, that's being charged by the Carroll County Solid Waste, not the city, my rate still would not go down. I'd still be paying $50 a month, because it's a commercial rate. So I don't think that would help me one way or the other, except it'd drive my cost up to buying yellow bags. And I'm, you know, I recycle everything I can, and I think what Mr. DeVito is talking about, maybe more people need to, the more that you recycle, the less yellow bags you use.
True.
And that's one of the reasons, I think, was to encourage people to recycle. It's not that, people have a misconception that they throw in the yellow bag, it's going to get recycled. That's not it. It's to encourage people to use the bottles, the cardboard, the plastics. Although they don't pick up cardboard, we still have to recycle that from a residence standpoint. And again, that's a Carroll County Solid Waste decision. We can't mandate for them to pick up cardboard for residences, I don't think. So we take our, I take mine out along with my newspapers, once a week or once every two weeks, after recycling, because I don't want to fill up a yellow trash, a bag full of that. And I think if people got back into the habit of that, they could afford, and they would understand that 75 cents is going to help curb recycling and reduce landfills. And that's ultimately what we're trying to do.
Spell?
Well, what the citizens are saying to me is if it's good for the citizens, it's good for the businesses. If it encourages the citizens, it would also encourage the businesses. I understand business owners would not be so in favor of that, but I also understand the citizens are very much in favor of that. I understand many of us do recycle as much as we possibly can, and we would without yellow bags. I also understand, from a senior citizen's point of view, people who are on a fixed budget, it's getting harder and harder and harder for them as, as prices go up. Our yellow bags apparently, at the end of 2010, the revenues for yellow bags was $28,804, and the cost to replenish the inventory was $9,297. And there's a 15 grand each year Carroll County solid waste recycling subsidy. So...
$4,500.
There's, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of profit here, a little bit of wiggle room. Maybe we can, maybe we can even try for six months, perhaps, allowing senior citizens to have one bag per week, or one, two bags per month, or something like that, to help take a little bit of the load off the senior citizens.
Mr. Weaver?
So that would violate equal protection. You can't give the senior citizens free bags. You'd have to do it across the board.
Or do away with the bags.
Well, before you go too far down the road of creating a special class and giving them a free bag, you're going to get equal protection problems.
How can people do other things for senior citizens, then?
You're not, I would like specifics of what you think they're doing, but...
Senior citizens often get discounts at different places, especially if they're a member of the AARP or so forth.
Those are private businesses they get a discount from. They're not the federal government, or the state government, or the city government.
How can we help the senior citizens with this yellow bag issue?
I don't know that you can. But you can't do it by giving them free bags and not giving other people free bags.
Well, then I would move to do away with the yellow bags in Eureka Springs.
And if you do that, you may come into violation of your current contracts with the solid waste. You need to look at that before you would propose that. Otherwise, you may create contract violations. We have a contract with Carroll County Solid Waste, the city does. And that contract determines certain terms of what has to be done. I am not telling you it will or won't violate it, but if you haven't looked to make a proposal at this table and acted now to do away with yellow bags, could potentially put the city in jeopardy.
I'd like to have that opinion in writing, signed, and attached to the minutes, please.
You have my opinion here at the table. It's recorded, and you have your secretary or your minute taker. You do not have the right to ask for an expenditure of the city. My budget is paid through the mayor's office. Unless you'd like to pass an ordinance to pay me directly.
Not likely.
Well, one of the reasons that I co-sponsored this is because I've gotten the same request. Also, if you drive down Main Street on Tuesday night after 10, 11 o'clock, and you see the mounds and mounds and mounds of black bags, and then it was interesting, before this finally got to the table after being postponed a couple of times, that there was a citizen of the week, and the Lovelace County citizen, for the efforts that were being put into recycling by a particular business in town, and also a letter to the editor by another conservative citizen about the yellow trash bags being a motivator for recycling. I, too, believe that there could be some meeting of the minds, which apparently, I don't know whether at this table or with the Carroll County Waste Disposal or whatever, because any contract can be amended if both parties agree to it, whether there's a year, two years, or six months left on it. My concern is, again, we've, we've heard two dissenting from the table, who are both business owners, which I don't think totally expresses the concerns of the citizenry. But I feel that there should be something looked into as far as either amending the requirements of the contract with this Carroll County Waste, or something. All I remember is whenever I first started getting involved in city government, whenever I came on planning commission, is one of the verboten topics that I was told never to discuss, which, you know, immediately perked up my ears, was yellow trash bags. So I think just because we've always done it that way does not necessarily make it correct.
Ms. DeVito?
Well, while I may be a business owner, I still retain my citizenship in this community. So I might find a little bit of difficulty in pitting the business community against the citizenry in this community, because we are all part of the same community. We pay for our trash. If I put out more than what my allotment is every week, I pay an additional fee. With all due respects to the two... With all due respects to the two candidates.